And welcome to the Village of Oaklawn Board of Trustees regular meeting agenda today. It is the, we are meeting here in the Village Hall Auditorium, 9446 South Raymond Avenue. This is meeting number 2023-18. This is Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, and it is 9:00 a.m. Roll call, please.
Mayor Boarder.
President.
Trustee Stocker.
Here.
Trustee Desmond.
Yep.
Trustee Sack.
Here.
Trustee Pembroke.
Here.
Trustee Olenichak.
Here.
Can I have a motion to allow trustee Mallow to participate remotely because of employment?
Second. All in favor?
Sorry, trustee Stocker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak.
Yes.
Paul, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, good, thank you. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, any public comments today?
We do.
Okay.
Dan.
Hi, everyone. Before I get started, I think it's important to note something. I grew up in Oaklawn. I moved here when I was eight. I moved out when I was 12. I chose to come back here because I love this town. So I bought a home here. I've lived here myself 38 of my 45 years. So today on the agenda, we're going to be talking about changing the Halloween ordinance. And I've got some prepared comments here. I sent this all to you in an email, but I'm going to read them today for the video. Halloween is a cherished holiday for people of all ages, but it holds a special place in the hearts of children and the parents that celebrate with them. It's a time when they get to immerse themselves in the magic of costumes, candy, and spooky stories. However, the idea of imposing an even more stringent curfew on Halloween is a topic that warrants careful consideration. The village board is looking to reduce the time parents can spend celebrating this holiday with their children. Halloween traditions promote community bonding. From trick-or-treating to costume parties and other events, these activities not only contribute to a sense of belonging, but also help build stronger communities. Forbidding minors from participating in these activities after a certain time disrupts the natural flow of these traditions. Allowing minors to stay out later on Halloween encourages them to actively engage with their neighbors and community. This holiday promotes responsibility and independence, an excellent time for parents to teach their children. Today's world sees children sheltered inside doing indoors activities all too often, allowing minors to navigate the streets, follow basic public safety rules in practice, and teach them the importance of respecting other people's properties. This promotes a feeling of community and gets our neighborhood actively engaging with each other. Advocates for curfews on Halloween often argue that it's necessary for the safety of minors. While safety is paramount, it's more productive to focus on educating people and promoting responsible behavior. Establishing guidelines and rules for minors, Halloween activities ensure that everyone can have a safe and enjoyable experience without an arbitrary curfew. Factually, there is no marked increase to crime on Halloween. And in fact, pedestrian lady audio accidents are less common because people are on the lookout for children. Halloween is a time for creativity to shine. Minors who are passionate about costumes, like myself, makeup and design often put a great deal of effort into their outfits. A curfew could limit the time they have to display their creations and might discourage them from fully participating in these festivities. Allowing minors to stay out later on Halloween encourages their artistic expression. Attracting new people to come to our community should be paramount in what we strive for. Keep hearing about buses being shipped in. Show me a picture. I haven't seen one. I've asked people. Doesn't exist. Yeah, people might come in cars. My girlfriend doesn't live in this town. She trick-or-treated here when she was a kid because she loves this town. Now is considering buying a place here because I live here and I talk about how great this town is. While concerns about the safety of minors on Halloween are valid, posting a curfew is not necessarily the most effective solution. Halloween is a holiday that encourages traditions, creativity, community bonding. It provides an opportunity for minors to develop responsibilities and independence. Instead of curfews, a more balanced approach involves educating children about safety, setting guidelines for activity, and fostering an environment that allows them to fully engage the Halloween spirit while keeping safety in mind. This approach ensures that Halloween remains a cherished and inclusive holiday for everyone, regardless of their age. There's no reason that the village board should entertain the idea of...
Sir, you have three minutes. You have three minutes.
I have two. I have 15 seconds left.
Okay.
This approach ensures that Halloween remains a cherished and inclusive holiday for everyone regardless of age. There's no reason the village board should entertain this idea.
Thank you for your comments. I should point out that the, what's proposed here on this ordinance, which has not been passed, simply limits the hours of trick-or-treat to coincide with every community surrounding her.
This is not up for debate if you'd like to comment.
Okay, all right, sir. All right, all right. I'm only com, I listened to you.
You can't comment on my...
I can...
You cannot comment.
I can.
He can comment on anything he wants.
I can comment.
And I can debate.
All right, sir. I'll point out that our restriction from eight to seven, if should it pass, only brings the Village of Oaklawn in compliance with every other community, which some limit to six. We are the only community that goes to eight. And we're proposing here, but, sir.
I don't care.
Okay.
Then you can leave.
Then you can leave.
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate your comment, but you can leave. Are you in the candy business?
No.
Oh, okay, thought maybe you were. I don't know, I'm just curious.
Because you're ignorant.
I'm just curious. Anyway, sir, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. And I too agree with you. This is a great town. I've chose to live in it all my life. All right, any other public comments?
Yes. Dave Weiner.
Yeah, sorry.
I do not have prepared remarks.
Okay.
I find myself oddly dovetailing with that. So the one thing I'll say is, I think, a change to a shorter time. I realize it does line up with a lot of towns around here, but I think it's onerous in two ways. One is it puts an undue burden. Well, I've lived in Oaklawn 21 years, and my son, who just turned 18, he was here the whole time for that, obviously. So we went many, many trick-or-trayings. Up until recently, first of all, he turned 18, but also his mom worked downtown. She would get off the train at 5:35, walk home, about 10-minute walk. That would give us, under the new proposed rule, about 15 minutes to get ready for one hour of trick-or-treating. I don't know if anybody on here ever went trick-or-treating when they were a kid. One hour would have not been very much fun. So, at best, and that's if the weather's good and all that, right? So I think that's going to be harsh for a lot of people who are in similar circumstances. Some people don't even get off till six. So basically, like in Hometown, those kids don't get to trick-or-treat if they don't have a grandparent or somebody come over and help. And I, I know many people who live in Hometown, I'm sure most of us do, right? So that, that's a little, it's a little onerous on those folks. I'm not saying it has to be the 10 o'clock, 10:30. When I was a kid, it was curfew, trick-or-treating until curfew was up. I'm not saying that. I think 8 o'clock is still a fair amount. And the other thing I think is, the tighter we make that time, the more incidents of, for lack of a better term, scofflaws you're going to have, right? And now you're going to have people calling the police at 7:10, 7:15. And now we've got to have the police decide, who do we enforce this on? Who do we give a ticket to? Which 10-year-old dressed up? I, I think that opens, that's onerous and undue for our police to have to deal with that kind of weird nonsense of picking and choosing on accident or enforcing it hardcore on everybody, because that's really the, the fair way to do it. But then, then it's draconian, right? Now you're not having any, any fun for families or kids at all, I think. So I, I think, I can understand why it's a well-intentioned plan, but I, I don't think it's the best thing in the bigger picture for both families and for our law enforcement, who have probably better things to do than chase around 10-year-olds who are out ringing the doorbell at 7:12. That's all I've got. Have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Anything, any other comments?
Karen. Sorry, is it O'Day?
It is O'Day.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. I do not as...
An Oaklawn resident?
I am an Oaklawn resident of 46 years, born in, all right. So I do not have a speech prepared as well. I too, with these gentlemen, think whoever brought this up is not thinking of the teenagers in our neighborhood. I will have a rebuttal as to what everyone said. Countryside, 3 to 8. LaGrange, 3 to 8. LaGrange Park, 3 to 8. Oak Park, 4 to 8. See that fluctuation? Four, thinking of working parents. Western Springs, 3 to 8. Naperville, 3 to 8. Those may not be our surrounding areas, but guess what? They are voted in Illinois, some of the best towns to raise a family. All of you up here, if your children are beyond teenage years, I would say, how did you run around Oaklawn? I ran around Oaklawn until nine at night. And I live over near the St. Catherine's area. I call it Halloween town. I take pride in our area. Whomever brought this proposal up is not thinking of the teenagers. I run two Girl Scout troops in this neighborhood, two, all of them teenagers. They say to me all the time, Ms. O'Day, why does our village keep taking things away from us? I, my rebuttal to them is, come speak. Right now, they're all in school. They're high schoolers, and they're succeeding. They're ranked one and two at schools. They, if, if they heard this, they would all be sad, because on Halloween, I have chili at my house, kids come in and out, and they sort candy, they go back out again. I have never heard of a 7 o'clock. Anyone know what time the sun goes down around here? Last night, 5:46. If it goes down at that time, the children like to be outside, teenagers too. Let kids be kids. All the time we're complaining about the trouble that children are getting into, or teenagers, just let them be kids. It's one day. An hour means a lot. I too did pull up our surrounding areas, but I do think we should look at villages that actually are family-friendly and voted the best to live in Illinois and mirror them. That's what I would ask. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments, Madam Clerk?
Steve and Sarah. Oh, nope, after. Thank you. That's all for public comments.
All right. We'll move on to number five, conflict of interest disclosure. Any trustee have any click with any issue on the agenda? Hearing none, ComEd presentation. Somebody from ComEd here?
Steve and Sarah.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have an area we can plug our computer in, show screen?
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Do we have an area?
Yes, we were asked to show a KMZ of proposed work in traffic flow. So do we have something we can share screen and show?
Yep, they're working on it. Okay, thank you.
What's a KMZ?
What's that?
It's, we're going to show Google Earth with a map over it of what our proposed work is. We're here to discuss the traffic flow implications, along with restoration concerns that were brought up by Oaklawn for our proposed work for ComEd.
Over waiting. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name's Adriana Carraschio. I'm the external affairs manager. I know I spoke to you a couple times, Mayor and Tom, but I'm just here to support, and I can take anything back with me.
Thank you.
Also, I want to introduce myself. I'm Rafael, the project manager for the work that's taking place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion that we move along and then come back to this at the end? Mother group working through technical difficulties?
Sure. Vernon, how long you think before we can correct this? All right, let's move on. Okay.
Thanks, guys. Sorry about that.
Okay. All right. Approval of regular meeting minutes, 2023-7, dated October 10th, 2023. Motion, please. Motion approved. Second.
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Okay.
Page three, item H, was listed twice for trustee Olenichak as a first and a second.
Okay. Is there... Yeah, we need a second for that comment. Is there a second first?
Second.
Okay, and then we need a motion to amend? Paul, you're making a motion to amend?
Mm-hmm.
And a second?
Yep.
Okay. And again, would you repeat your motion again?
The motion to amend page three, item H, it listed trustee Olenichak as the first and the second for that item.
Okay. Okay, do I need a motion to amend then?
He just made it, and then the second is...
Then we got to take a vote. Okay.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stocker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I need a motion to approve the amended minutes.
All right. I need a motion to approve the amended...
Motion to approve.
A second.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stocker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak.
Yes.
Motion approved. New business by village trustees. District one, trustee Desmond.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no new business.
District two?
Yeah, I just have a public works update. The projects that we've been working on through the village on Southwest Highway, 95th Street, all the infrastructure projects, including the streets, are all on target to be done prior to snowfallings. I want to commend our public works and our team and administration for the great job that they've done during construction season and addressing the infrastructure issues that we've...
Thank you, sir. District three? District four, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, this, I'm sorry. District three. Okay.
The only item I have was, just in regards to the sand on the green, I just want to make sure people in our residents know December 2nd is the date. We typically have it the day Saturday after Thanksgiving. This year, we are pushing it one week, so it will be December 2nd. So we just want to make sure that that's out there, and people know that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. District four?
No new business, Mayor.
District five?
No new business. Thank you.
District six?
No new business.
Okay. We'll move on to the village managers' report?
Noted.
Okay. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees, village manager, or village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request the Board of Trustees approval for the St. Linus Turkey Trot to take place Saturday, November 4th, 2023. B, request the Board of Trustees approval to waive fees of $5,325.74 associated with the St. Linus Turkey Trot. C, request Board of Trustees approval of the zoning and planning commission's recommendation for a five-foot variation of a 10-foot utility easement along the east side of the property located at 6705 West 91st Place. D, ordinance 231870, in ordinance approving a plot abrogation and a request to vacate part of the existing public utility easement at 6705 West 91st Place. And E, resolution 231869, a resolution waiving the competitive bidding process and approving a proposal from C-I-S-Y-N-C-L-L-C for professional counseling service and development of an analytical dashboard for the Oaklawn Regional Emergency Communication for a total fee not to exceed $100,000. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stocker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak.
Yes.
Motion approved. Eleven, ordinance 231871, in ordinance granting amnesty of business license fees for the year of 2023 in the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois. Motion, please.
Mayor, just before we motion on it, I just want to make a couple of comments.
Motion first.
Motion first, second, and then comment.
Motion approved. I'll second it.
Okay. Any comments?
Just a couple of quick comments. Trustee Pembroke and I have been in discussions with management about this for the last several months, about extending this from last year. The success of our business community is critical to the Village of Oaklawn. We're still having issues with inflation. Many of the businesses are still having trouble staffing and keeping good employees working there. And I've talked to management, and financially, our retail taxes have been very strong this year, and deposits in the banks are doing very well. So again, there's no impact on this to taxpayers. It just helps out our business community, and we want to keep our businesses strong in Oaklawn and bring more businesses to Oaklawn. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. You have any else?
Yeah.
Yes.
Another factor is the recent property tax assessments came out, and some of our commercial properties have seen huge increases. So it's another reason that we'd like to help the businesses out here in Oaklawn.
Yeah, property tax on our business community is really stymying them.
It's steep.
They pay much more in taxes than residential people pay. So we got to help them and support them. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to add, both trustee Pembroke and Sack were pretty clear that they, they wanted to extend this, provided we could, as a village board, you guys not raise property taxes ourselves, because that would be a fair point from the taxpayers. They both make great points that we do rely heavily on our business community, because every tax dollar we bring in from them is tax dollars we don't have to assess on our own citizens. So as it sits now, as they indicated, our retail taxes have been very strong. They're starting to get weak. Inflation is starting to creep in, as we all know. Our finance department did a great job with our investments six, seven months ago, and as trustee Sack said, our interest income is strong. So we can, at this point, and it seems pretty, we can make a confident bet, we won't raise property taxes on our own residents, meaning the village, other governing bodies within Oaklawn still may. And we can likely do this for one more year, but probably not another year after that.
Thank you. Any other? Roll call, please.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stocker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak.
Yes.
Motion passes. I'm going to be very happy to make that announcement at our next Chamber of Commerce meeting. Thank you. All right. Twelve is ordinance 231872, in ordinance amending certain provisions of the village called pertaining to trick-or-treating. Motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
As I put this on, I just want to let the residents that came out here to speak. I got the emails. I appreciate all of your points and the things that have been said. I, I do want you to understand that we in the village take great pride in providing multiple opportunities for our families, our friends, and the kids in this community to have good times. We have Santa on the Green. We have the weekend bands that we have, and I know one resident is shaking her hand during the summer. We have a Fourth of July parade. We also have our Fall Music Festival, which some people have said limits teens and excludes teens. And I will tell you that based off of this year and taking a look at the type of music venue we had, and also the types of entertainment that we've had for the kids with beanbags and other areas, the only thing that we have done is taken in consideration the safety of the residents. Society has changed. I've grown up in the Village of Oaklawn. I've lived here since 1966. I've raised my family here in the Village of Oaklawn, and I'm proud of the Village of Oaklawn. But when you look at the society changes that have happened, and some of the elements that have happened throughout the suburbs, that we as a village took a proactive look at, like our Fall Music Festival. Yes, we decided to take heightened security measurements so that the residents of the Village of Oaklawn can enjoy it and not have to worry about their security, nor the security of their kids. But we made a rule that if kids want to come to it, their parents have to be there. Carnivals that run, St. Catherine's, their carnival, Fun Time, made security changes, just like we at St. Gerald's made security changes, to make sure that when family and community is in an area, they are secure. And they don't have to worry about what could happen to them, based off of what society has happened, or what's happened in society throughout the southwest suburbs and throughout the United States. So I, I think taking this as a argumentative or a personal attack against people, I don't think that that's fair. I respect your opinion. I respect you. I respect you. But I also have to take in consideration the information that's provided to me and the concerns from other residents throughout the United, throughout the second district and throughout the Village of Oaklawn. The fact is, Alsup, Bridget, Burbank, Chicago Ridge, Crestwood, Hickory Hills, Hometown, Payless Hills, Payless Heights, Worth, all surrounding communities around us vary between 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock. It is a legitimate concern. I don't want to take things away from kids. I too have kids that live in this neighborhood. I have a 16-year-old. So I'm not one of those that's not looking at both ends of the spectrum of what needs to be done. But I do believe that it is fair and reasonable to provide a venue to 7:00 for our kids to be able to go out and trick-or-treat. And unfortunately, society has changed. From when I was a kid, being out till 9:00 at night, going through all the neighborhoods in the Village of Oaklawn, knowing where the good candy was and knowing where the bad candy was, that was just part of what I would do. It is, it is a difficult decision, but I feel strongly that we should mirror what the other communities are doing for the betterment of our community. So that is what I had to say. So that is, what I had to say, I don't know if anybody else has anything to say, but it is a fact. Our surrounding communities have seven o'clock or earlier curfews.
Thank you, trustee. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just, I think it's much ado about nothing. You know, I mean, this is what we are arguing about? Trick-or-treating? Let's take the vote.
Okay. Call the vote, please.
Trustee Mello.
No.
Trustee Stalker.
No.
Trustee Desmond.
No.
Trustee Sack.
No.
Trustee Pembroke.
No.
Trustee Olenychuk.
Yes.
Motion fails. We'll move on to the village clerk's report.
Your disbursement resolution number twenty-two-three dash eighteen B dated October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of three million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Mello.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Olenychuk.
Yes.
Motion passes. Write the checks. All right, I have a, uh, village proclamation here, um, the mayor proclamation for the National American Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous people and the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom and prosperity and the greatness of America Day. And we honor the National American Indian Heritage Month community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, and educational and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the village president, the village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, and the execution of its home rule powers states the following. November should be National American Indian Heritage Month in the village of Oaklawn and urge all citizens to observe this month with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. I'd just like to, uh, mention that the Oaklawn Hometown Middle School will be honoring veterans on eleven-four at nine-thirty a.m. They have been doing this for a number of years. The whole school assembles. They usually have forty or fifty veterans there. They do a wonderful job educating kids on the contribution sacrifices that Americans have made serving this country. Wouldn't have our democracies today if it wasn't for the people. Gave some their sweat, some their blood, and some their lives to make America the country we all enjoy. With that, I'll take a motion for. Oh, a comment?
ComEd's gonna do the.
Oh, yeah, right, ComEd. Are you ready? Are we ready? I'm sorry, I forgot about you.
Okay.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Alex would prefer three to seven.
It's not Alex. You wanna see the emails I got from the residents? It's not a personal thing.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So myself and Sarah, we are engineers of choice at Tallman Consultants, uh, working with ComEd. Um, a little background on our project. We are installing, um, ComEd fiber, either underground or aerial. Um, and the reason is to help automate and strengthen the resiliency and reliability of the power grid. It is an effort to minimize outages at any time, including during a storm event. So this fiber will help with any, any outages, storms, um, to reduce the number of, um, or occurrences, I should say. So duration and restoration notes, we have four project locations here. This is just one of them that Sarah is showing on the screen currently. Total construction time for all four is five to six weeks. Restoration for all locations must be deferred to spring of two thousand twenty-four. Um, and project locations will be left neat and leveled off, in a leveled-off manner temporarily until final restoration can be complete.
What streets are those?
This is West one hundred and eleventh and Cicero.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Is this disruptive to traffic? Are you gonna be digging?
Yes, we will be digging. And we have traffic control plans for, for the project as well. So, um, so this one was approved by IDOT and by Alsup, uh, as well as the shit, City of Chicago. Um, the Oaklawn area is right in that bike path in the northwest part of the project. That, that is the only jurisdiction, um, in Oaklawn, but, um, so that's the bike path that's gonna be affected. Cyclists and pedestrians will be flagged around the work area and, um, it is to remain ADA accessible at all times during construction and during restoration.
How are you crossing the street? Is that open cut or is it?
Bore.
Bore?
Bore.
So there won't be any traffic flow disruption?
So they, they're boring, the bore pit on the southwest corner is gonna be in the street, so there will be traffic disruption. And then once we cross halfway between Cicero, we enter Chicago jurisdiction, so that's open cut there. But, um, there is gonna be an opening on the southwest corner of one hundred and eleventh and Cicero.
How many lanes are going to be affected at one time?
Only one.
All right.
When's this going to occur?
The Oaklawn permit is the last permit we're waiting on, I believe, so probably a week or two.
So we're looking to start construction, this is possibly gonna be, uh, contractors right now. We are just having the, uh, the permit.
Yes.
Can you open O two, please?
And it will be the same contractor for all these locations.
This is the next location, so we will be coring out of a manhole, a ComEd manhole that is in, um, in the street and trenching, um, about twenty-four feet within Oaklawn jurisdiction south, um, and then boring in that parkway there, which is Chicago. So there are four traffic sequences that last a day or two, one to two days each, and a maximum of one lane closure, um, at a time.
Do have a question for you. Is this part of a progressive plan to address the power i- issues that they've had in that area?
It is, yes. And it, it, it's, so they're expanding their entire, um, this isn't a, uh, an effort to rebuild the entire power grid, um, in Oaklawn and Alsup. I don't know if you guys wanna touch on that at all.
Yeah, 'cause my understanding is your main power feed comes from the Alsup side coming into that neighborhood that's right off of, right by the cemetery there off of one hundred and eleventh?
Correct. So I'm, I'm part of a group called Reacts, and what we're doing now, we're installing fiber, um, or grid resiliency. So we're connecting all the devices that are on the network, switching, switching power back when there's an outage, um, identifying loads where we can bring it down and, and reroute power and stuff like that. So now, if you've noticed, if you're, there's an outage in your area, it's just the lights flickering. And that's because we're installing the fiber, which is reducing these outages. So we're doing that across the entire ComEd network, not just this area, but.
Well, I just know by following the, the reports on your reliability, this area specifically between, from one hundred and eleventh to one hundred and third between Cicero and Plasky is one of the biggest areas that you can make an improvement on reliability.
Yes, yes, yep. And that's exactly what this is for.
Excellent.
No, you said one lane at a time, that's.
Correct.
Yeah, one lane at a time, in, um, in either direction.
Now, is this part of a longer progressive plan to address some of the issues that you've had with the infrastructure and the aging infrastructure in the village of Oaklawn? Uh, especially when it comes to some of the pole replacement. We had an aggressive program for a period of like three to five years, and it seems like you've come off on that.
So this does address some of the pole replacements, um, with the new loading, with the fiber. Uh, we have certain grades that we have to meet. And through that, we will be replacing the poles. Uh, there's also, uh, ongoing programs within ComEd that's not part of this, where they go through and they're checking the poles and everything, where they are replacing them. That, some of the areas may have been put on hold because this was coming. And instead of putting a pole now that's gonna fail later and replace it later again, we're addressing it now.
And, and on the pole program, did you go back to a three-year or are you still at a seven-year or above?
That I don't know. That's a different program. I don't have that answer.
Could you get back on the answer on that? Thank you.
Three versus seven?
Uh, yeah, on your, your inspections.
Can you, uh, tell me how much of the construction in Oaklawn is the old four KV versus the twelve KV construction? Has it all been updated, upgraded?
I believe everything that we are working on is twelve KV.
No, in Oaklawn. You know how much is twelve KV in Oaklawn, not just what you're working on?
Oh, I do not know that.
I can, uh, follow up.
Please, please.
Okay, um, so this is the next, this is a third of the four projects, or of the segments, I should say. So the plan here is to core out the same manhole. Um, as you can see, we're planning on coring diagonally and then we will be boring once we, um, yeah, right at that joint. So small trench in that area as well. Um, I, also IDOT approved, and I should say for the previous one, it was, um, IDOT approved as well. No, uh, site-specific traffic control plan, but we are following IDOT standards in regards to traffic control. So one lane closure at a time, in either direction.
You'd mentioned earlier that, uh, parkway replacements will come later or repairs, but you keep referencing boring. You're going under, so.
There are, uh, there are trenches. So here we have the trench that's diagonalized, is open cut. And the first bore pit, descending bore pit will be where the joint is, um, and then the receiving will be down here. So the trench will only be from the manhole to the bore pit, which is just a diagonal. And then, um, a small trench from the bore pit to the pole that revising up, and then the middle section's all bore.
So in that particular instance, there'll be no need for a parkway replacement, 'cause that's an entryway to the village, excuse me, with quite a lot of Christmas decorations and et cetera.
So there's potholing, um, wherever we're crossing other utilities perpendicularly, so like a sewer line, um, we'll, we'll dig a hole at that site to make sure we're crossing that properly. Um, and then there will be restoration in kind in those spots. That would only affect the restoration, um, in the parkway. The other is going to be asphalt restoration in the street.
Yep. And in that bore, um, as Sarah mentioned, all of the restoration and the potholing is in the parkway. It's not in the street, um, specifically for the potholing. And this is the final location in regards to this project. We are on one hundred and seventh, um, from Keeler to Costner Avenue. And this, this one, we will be, um, boring from one existing ComEd pole, um, and to another existing ComEd pole. So one receiving, one sending bore pit, um, and a bore all the way through. No open cut. Potholing as well here, nothing in the street, um, and following IDOT standard traffic control. Which in this case would be, uh, left to just the shoulder over there, um, or the, I guess, the parking, uh, area or just a parkway wherever the contractors are able.
Yeah, that will likely just be a parking lane closure for contractor vehicles equipment, but no effect on bidirectional traffic.
Yep, and same side pedestrian access is maintained all the way through.
And just for the record, this mimics some of the work that has been already done in the village of Oaklawn to address our power grid. It's only because of the streets that this is on and the required work permits that you need that you're bringing this to our attention, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So the way it's designed is, I have, the project design is called an Alsup, it's called Alsup, um, and it's broken up in different sections. So this is one particular section. So you'll, you'll see other permits come through, permit requests come through, um, as we progress through that design on the individual links.
Just a quick question. This is in my district. In layman's terms, when the residents reach out to me and say, what is the benefit or what's happening? We're upgrading the, the grid. It'll allow for better service, like?
Communication time, right? So it's fiber, so it's communication from the equipment back to, um, uh, to ComEd. So we can control and see where the outages are or it switches faster, um, just because of communication, so.
Okay.
Better resilience, better service.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Communication from who, to who?
From the equipment in, in, on the grid back to ComEd. So we can monitor when we see outages or heavy loads, um, we can, we can address it immediately instead of waiting to have a, send a technician out to see what had happened. We already know or we can, we can see it before it happens and be proactive about it.
And then, uh, and then if you see it happening, what do you do? Just outta curiosity.
It switches. It can reroute the power.
Okay.
There is, uh, redundant power paths, uh, ground and overhead, so they can switch the paths.
Okay, I get it.
And that's where, when I said if you see an outage lately, they're minimizing, you might see the lights flicker, it comes back on and that's it. Whereas it might have been out for an hour or two or whatever, um, it's just, it's getting a, a stronger grid.
Yeah, this is basically building a two-way path so that if something breaks in one direction, there's no loss of service, as Rich mentioned. It just switches to the other path. Everyone's good to go. Great.
Where are those paths?
This is part of the path.
Right.
It, where are they going?
If, if, if there's a power outage and it switches, what it's, is there, it switches to overhead, it switches to?
It can be either.
Yeah, it can be either.
Depends on where and what the event is.
And making sure that they're far enough away from each other. If one line breaks 'cause a tree falls on it, it doesn't hit our redundant path too.
And it might be the same paths on the same pole, switching from twelve to thirty-four KV. Um, it just depends again on the bad.
So like, there's, there's a secondary supply for?
Yes.
Okay.
It's totally redundant now versus what we did, what we were experiencing in twenty fifteen here.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
All right, well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. All right, number fifteen is adjournment. Motion, please? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming out.